Still didn't want to.
Check for glass with the pot.
Pretty safe now.
That would have been in quite.
The lights changed colour.
I've kicked it.
Welcome to the finance committee meeting on the 24th May. Six o'clock, starting with the agenda. First item, the agenda, forty seven twenty two, election of chairman. I can ask for nominations.
Cancel James, please.
I don't think I can get praise.
So are there any other nominations? Can we put that to the vote? It's giving cancel James accept nomination. That's unanimous.
Not like you've got enough jobs already.
That's my heart. Good job, sir. Sorry, I'm giving you credit, the councillor says she's mayor. So again, my. Let's get it out of the way.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah. I'm gonna get charged. This is for.
Thank you. So we move on to forty eight twenty two, which the election of vice chair to receive nominations and votes. Do I have any nominations?
Can you nominate this time? I did it last time.
Would you like to be vice chair?
Oh.
Okay. Right number.
No problem. Can I have a second, please?
There we go.
Is in favour, showing the pain. Welcome aboard again. Super, so we'll move straight on to forty nine twenty two, declarations of any special or pecuniary interests to receive any additional interest not already registered. Anybody? Obviously, if anything comes up during the course of our discussions, please feel free to debate. Agenda item fifty twenty two, apologies for absence, there is none because we have a full house. Thank you, Karen. So moving on to fifty one twenty two, the minutes to confirm the minutes of the committee meeting held on twenty second of March, which were received by full council on the twenty ninth of March as a true record. We'll go through those page by page. They're not in packs, so I might go through them page by page. We have page one, page two, and then obviously we have all the appendices. Are we happy that they're a true fair record?
Yeah.
Of our discussions. Agree?
Mm hmm.
See if that will do with that. Later. So fifty two twenty two, finance committee admin. I love that phrase. So what we're going to deal with under this agenda item is to review the finance committee's structure, terms of reference and calendar meetings for the twenty twenty two, twenty three mayoral year. I'll start with the terms of reference. Look at them, zip by magic. So again, these have been circulated previously. They are in line with our financial regs. There is nothing there that is against them because it can't be. And it's just a little bit of tightening up and clarification. Obviously, this will be a recommendation to full council because we can't approve it ourselves. Any questions or queries on the terms of reference, please?
Yeah, do we have a call another place on terms of reference? Three.
It's very first. So no pressure, but it doesn't pressure us on. We're a tight little team now, so.
Okay.
So do I have a proposal for that, please? Thank you, Barbara. Do I have a second, thank you, Chris? All those in favour of recommending most of full council? That's unanimous, thank you. So we've done that bit. Really, the other two items are for notes. Obviously, they were approved at mayor making in terms of the schedule of meeting dates and the membership. There is one note that I would like to highlight to you there, which is the meeting on Tuesday twenty fourth of January next year. It starts at six P M. Mayor making note that said it started at seven, unless everybody wants to move it to seven. But to six o'clock still works for everyone. Super, so those items are for duly noting, thank you. We then move on to fifty three twenty one, which is the contracts update to note the attached schedule of contracts. Obviously, we're early on in the financial year, so there's not as much there. We have the Royal British Legion floor, which obviously has been through full council and ourselves previously. And then there's also the tender for the health and safety consultant. Any questions or queries on that, please? We're happy to deem that duly noted. Thank you. We then move on to fifty four twenty two, committee financial decisions to note the attached schedule of financial decisions. Again, it's a little bit quiet, but it's only the start of the year. Obviously, you've all seen this previously. Any questions or queries, please? I think it's quite exciting in terms of the venues and communications committee that build an installation of planters for the guild room, guild hall tea room outside space. So that's sort of the first phase of our.
Beautification.
I was thinking that, that's a great word. Well done, Dennis.
You say beautification of the area. I bet you're away.
Got them, yeah, pedestrianisation and so on. So, yeah, working on that resolution from full council, so that's good to see. And that's all coming out of the project, project reserve budget. So if we're all happy and duly noted on there with beautification, we will move on. So fifty five twenty two is the approval of payments to receive and approve the attached dis needs of payments made since the last meeting. This will be a recommendation to full council if you are all in agreement. Any questions, queries or comments on it, please? So the recommendation is that making of these payments be approved by this committee and recommended to full council. Do I have a proposal, please?
For me?
Dennis, do I have a second, please? Thank you, Chris, all those in favour?
I'm just glad it gets circulated in advance because.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
It's so much better to sit at home and peruse them.
Yeah.
And obviously, if there are ever, is ever any time that you think, oh, I wonder what that is. Alan is more than happy to hear from you to request an electronic copy. So much of our stuff is now electronically held rather than paper held. And any supporting documents, you can also see the process in which it goes through in terms of approval and that sorts of thing. Totally encouraged, though. So we move on to item fifty six twenty two, which is the final financial report for the year ended the thirty first of March. This has been circulated in advance. There is quite an amount of commentary and we have an extensive recommendation. I think the papers are quite self explanatory. Obviously. Yep, we've continued to be impacted by Covid nineteen and continue to do so as, you know, I suppose consumer confidence rebuilds. Overall, obviously, the income for the twelve months ended the first first of March twenty twenty two is approximately two percent higher than the budget, which means we're fairly marginally better than we thought. And the historic negative impact of Covid nineteen is being reversed. It is gradual at this stage, but hopefully with this summer, we'll start seeing that change quite considerably. And I know there's been some quite good events in terms of the Carnegie recently. So hopefully that trend will continue.
Just comment, sorry, yeah, on that, I mean, this is kind of justification what we give to Carbar because people are now seeing what we're doing. Because I did two events the weekend and people are realising that it could be a really good positive for the tax. Plus, it's a positive for our budget.
Absolutely.
So, you know, it was, you know.
And I think, yeah, actually, if we, when I say we, it's the royal we, the council manages this well. There is benefit to us, there is benefit to the residents in terms of activity. But there's also benefit to the residents that these items are sustainable, cost effective and actually minimal cost to the taxpayer. There are some events that we do put on at our expense, but then there's a balance there about, you know, resident wellbeing as well as, you know, the commercial aspect. And I think we can deliver well, both sides of things. On the expenditure side of things, there are significant variances. There have been overspends in departments and underspends. And expenditure amenities has been reduced from a transfer from reserves. Personnel savings are mainly attributable to salaries. And I know from the conversations that have been happening for several months in the personnel committee. Actually, for our staff wellbeing, we can't allow that to continue much more. We are running understaffed in terms of budget and what we need to deliver. And I'm very, very mindful that actually our team are at risk of becoming exhausted.
Yeah.
And we need to make sure that that doesn't happen. So obviously, the town clerk and her team have their personnel plans for the year. That has all been budgeted, so hopefully we can start seeing, you know, that coming through. And, you know, again, equating and delivery and supporting our team. I mean, certainly our town team with Nick heading it up, they have been frankly amazing.
Absolutely.
You know, and outstanding during these past two years and nothing's been too much trouble, so.
Yeah. But again, today, when I come to council, they, we were short on people because they have been working the weekends and everything. So we do, and I'm glad you brought it up, our personnel, because we really do need to alleviate the pressures on our staff as much, sorry, on our officers as much as we can.
On our team.
Yes.
On our team. Because, yeah, we are all part one team, so we really, really do need to do that. And then obviously, as the, the report says, this is not sustainable, that the shortening is not sustainable in the longer term. And it's anticipated the vacant post will be filled in the next twelve months. And obviously, look forward to hearing about the recruitment process.
Okay.
So the financial result against budget is a positive variance of eighty six thousand seven hundred and ten pounds. And it's really important to understand how we've gotten to it in terms of the final adjustments. So Alan, they've heard enough today, your turn.
I think what we did is we've always worried about our performance against budgets. And there were two reasons why. First one is we tapped our expenditure quite significantly. So if, if the council performed better than expected, you know, post Covid, we could actually start reinstating some of the budgets. But the second thing is that we would be always be nervous. So what we did, when we had our last forecast budget, we, we thought we were going to have a surplus of about forty one thousand pounds. At that stage, we, we, we were also very conscious that we had to, that we had a commitment to, probably a legal obligation to fund the R B L floor. So we didn't know what that was going to cost. Our estimates at that time seemed to be about thirty thousand. So we just stepped it at forty one thousand. We then also introduced a little bit of a cost cutting exercise in the last quarter because we were a bit worried that if we just, you know, we received surplus, we go spend, we could change the situation. But what happened is when we came to the year end, we have certain year end adjustments that we do. So the first one is that we value all our investments, they get valued at the thirty first of March. And this year, the previous year, we had a little bit of a loss. This year, we actually had a surplus because the markets recovered and the stockbrokers have changed the profile of our, of our investments. We had to transfer from reserve, most of it going to amenities and that had been, that had been approved through various council meetings. There was a small one for, for personnel. And then what we also do at the year end is we go through all our expenditure and we match into the periods. If we have contracts, if we've been paid expenses for six months, we take that out for accounting purposes and we put that into prepayments. So when you take those adjustments into account, it comes up to about seventy three thousand, just under seventy four thousand pounds. So when you look at the service of eighty six thousand, I think it's because the last quarter, we really did do a concerted effort just to make sure that we didn't go crazy in our spending. So it does show quite a, quite, 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 quite a position. But then I think the other thing that I did is I just, the second part is we actually went to store. What I mean, what's the information we put in the public domain? Every year, we produce an A H O, like annual general accountability, we choose it. We publish that, that's what, that contains financial information and that's what makes it comparable to all the other local councils in the, you know, in the country. And what I've done in the papers is I've actually just shown what's happened to our true reserves. Because what happens when we do the budget, we're only looking at it from an operational perspective. But we fund reserve, we fund projects, we fund assets and they don't come into the budget because the, 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 they're going to end up in the budget. So what I've done is I've just gone through and shown all the figures that we actually showed. You can see that the thirty first of March two thousand seventeen, we had reserves of four hundred and sixteen thousand. If you look at thirty first of March twenty twenty two, even though we had a surplus against budget, we had actually down to three hundred and sixty six thousand. So the last six years, we've actually lost fifty thousand pounds, it's actually gone out. So it looks like we've got all this money and we're making lots of money relative to budget. But it's just the distinction between what we're funding from prestep and what we're funding from reserves. And when I came in, there was a little bit of a muddle up. Sometimes there was a bit of funding from, you know, projects would be funded from and assets would be funded from prestep. And what we've done now is we've brought a very kind of line through that. So all our operation expenditure gets funded from, from, from prestep and we try and fund all our projects and capital expenditure out of reserves. But it does show that we're taking more out of reserves than we're actually putting back in. And that's really what's happened in the last six years. So as much as the financial, like I said, financial result, result looks fantastic, you know, we don't want to go against our budget. So we preserve the prestep part of it. We are still spending, the cash outflows are greater than the cash inflows and we need to take that into account.
So with that situation in mind, the recommendations are that the committee notes the surplus. Obviously, previously, we and then subsequently full council agreed that the R B L floor works would be funded out of any surplus that was left at year end. So the second item is that an amount of thirty thousand of the surplus be transferred into the property renewal reserve to fund the reinstatement of the R B L floor. This has been previously approved by councillors, the funding source for the R B L tender, it's approved. This transfer was also anticipated in the project budget approved by council. An amount of twenty five thousand to be transferred to the St Peter's Church Reserve. This is to recognise the issue raised in the council's risk register and that was approved by council. Obviously, that is quite a drop in the ocean because indicative figures at the moment are about four hundred thousand for the works at St Peter's. So this would at least help secure the initial stages and then hopefully potentially, if we can demonstrate or use as match funding for against things, funding bids and so on. And then finally, an amount of twenty five thousand to also be transferred to the property renewal reserve to fund the emergency work emanating from the recent survey of the Guildhall two towers. This was not included in the recent project budgets as the results of the survey were not available. So obviously, as you can see there, there's a sizable chunk that actually, if we are to maintain the properties that we are responsible for and deal with emergency works, we need to use that money. And those are the three recommendations that I am proposing to this committee. The movements of reserves would need to then be added to, should this committee so decide. They would then need to be added to the movement of reserves for the year ended on the next agenda item. And then that's approved by full council or that that is the gift of full council. Yes, Dennis.
Yes, I mean, that, that to me seems a good way of doing things every day because of the way, obviously, we've got problems with the George and everything. But that still leaves us, we've torn a considerable amount of money out of our main reserves.
Yes.
And we're not putting any money back into our main reserves this way, are we?
So some, within the accounts and the budget for, within the budget that we agreed in November, there is some.
Some replacement.
Some replacement. So for example, within heritage and town events that was civic, there is the replenishment, the, the annual adding up to the election costs reserve, which obviously is going to come into play. And there are some movements already built into that budget. So there are some in and out, but we need to be mindful that once you spend your savings, unless you start saving again, you've got an empty one.
And under the law, we have to have a certain amount of, is it three months?
It's.
Functioning money from, from the.
It's a recommendation, it's not an absolute.
It's a.
But it will be poor financial planning on our part.
And because of our, because of our status as, as a golden council or whatever we are, because we got some sort of award for the way we ran our town.
Gold standard, yes.
They're called standard, that, that would be in that recommendation and that could lose us our standard if we go out of it too much.
I don't know about the requirements for that particular rating. But yeah, as.
Just mind worrying.
Doing simple housewife economics, if you spend your savings, you haven't got anything for a rainy day. And if anything's taught us over the last couple of years.
We need rainy day.
Well, yeah, there's been rainy days and there's been typhoon months, frankly.
Yeah.
We've got typhoon two years, so, yeah, we need to be very, very mindful that, you know, we need to have a buffer zone. But at the same time, we can't just sit on money for the sake of it. And that was the reason why through this committee, you know, we brought in the reserving policy. So it made very, very clear what we needed to do and how we needed to do it. And if anybody, you know, wanted to establish a further reserve or do exactly as we're doing, you know, it needs to come from committee. It needs to be posted and then it needs full council approval.
On, on that recommendation, can I propose that recommendation?
You're welcome to propose that way, recommendation.
I think it might, oh, sorry.
No, it's not, I'm, I'm glad you are because it means to say it's, it's, it's not just sitting.
Yeah.
Here, it is a true committee.
Yeah.
So on the basis of those recommendations, Dennis kindly proposed, do I have a second? Thank you. Before we go any further, does anybody else want to add anything to the discussion before I go to the vote? All those in favour? You know, thank you. So we then move on to fifty seven twenty two, which is the approval of the movement in reserves for the year ended thirty first of March twenty twenty two. Again, you've had the covering papers. So the finance committee's terms of reference require it to recommend transfers to and from reserves. The answer has been on recommendation. So this will ultimately sit in the gift of full council next week. The reason for this movement is an integral part of the annual reporting and budget monitoring process. The annual accounts and A G O have been prepared on the current schedule of reserves attached to this document. So they do not take into account what we've just decided to add to it. So those will need to be added to that, ready for recommendation to full council. So just a few highlights on there. The column headed contributions ex grants are the grants received to fund projects. These projects were initially funded from reserves and the grants, the grants received have been credited back to reserves. So we're topping that up. So there has been a little bit of drawing down early and now that it's come in, we've put it back. The column headed spent on assets is the value of items on property, plant and equipment purchased during the year. These amounts have been included in recent year budgets. There are timing differences due to delays in commissioning projects and the timing of preparing the project's budget. These have been addressed in the twenty twenty two, twenty three project budget that has now been approved. The column headed spent on budgets is expenditure that has been attributed to a specific reserve funding source or that was not budgeted. The following explains major project spending. So ten thousand pounds from the general reserve and you'll notice that we've put all the nominal codes on there because I'm a stickler for these things. Was a county, the council resolution to fund Norfolk County Council Parish partnerships monies. The amount in the property renewal reserve is to fund amounts of property that do not meet the criteria of an asset, but rather repairs and maintenance. Investigative works on buildings such as the R B L floor and two Guildhall towers are maintenance and do not meet the criteria of a fixed asset. Hence the reason we've needed to put that money in. The five and a half thousand just under of the playparks reserve is to fund emergency health and safety works on the playparks, which were also approved by the amenities committee and full council. Similarly, the transfer from the Al earmarked reserve was an amount set aside to fund tree works that occurred in twenty one, twenty two year. So there was a little bit of extra work, but hopefully that will now settle down. The transfer from the elections reserved is to fund election costs incurred in twenty twenty one, twenty two that were not budgeted. We will have that same situation again this year. The transfer from the G T P officer was project reserve was to fund a budgeted contribution. That was actually over two years, not three.
I'm sorry.
Apologies.
That's me.
No, that's me. And the Guildhall reserve spending is part of the council's contribution to that project. The council had to contribute a minimum of forty thousand pounds to the project. It's never been budgeted to be spent from prestep and this budget spending is part of that commitment. So obviously, that helped draw down in terms of the H F bid, wasn't it? So the recommendation is that the committee approve the attached movement in reserves schedule. Do I have any questions regarding that schedule, please?
Yeah, can I ask you a couple?
Oh, yeah, please.
The three seven zero one, the lunnery reserve, what's that?
The lunnery restricted use reserve.
Yes.
Is based on the research that we did when we, a few years ago, when we did the research policy. We actually went through the reserves, we started classifying them. And the information that we had in the office at the time is that this was actually a restricted use reserve. It can only be used for certain things. I don't, I can't recall the exact detail, but I'll send it to you after, after the meeting if you like. But it really was just, these were the, the, the reserves that couldn't, that had to be used for a general, a specific purpose, not, not a general.
I can see that, but I mean, because we haven't got a lunnery anymore. You know, so. And also the swine clothes.
Yeah, there's been a little bit of information regarding that. When, when swine clothes was, was sold, the only information we had was from the, was from newspaper reports. So the council committed to spend that money actually on playparks or associated activity. And so that commitment is there until the council changes that commitment. I don't think it's a legal commitment, but it is a kind of what they call a moral obligation commitment because that's what we said we'd use the money.
That's right, because we have used some of the swine clothes money for various things.
Yeah, but specifically in that area, so it's for the direct residents benefit, yes.
Mm hmm.
I'm really sorry to be.
No, no, it's your radio.
The second one from the bottom, the N C F, noiseable. On every occasion, aren't restricted use reserve.
I was asked to, to, to put that, to, to set up that reserve by the former council office. So I have to admit, I haven't, I've been expecting someone to actually ask us, you piece of information or use the reserve for some specific purpose. So we, 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 one of our previous meetings that I had with Chair Finance at that point in time, we did agree to put the reserve schedule back onto the agenda earlier on this year, just so we can go through again and refine the information that we have on that.
Okay.
But I am a voter, so I just, at this stage, someone told me to do something, I just did it. Last question.
They give you somebody who knows.
There was some countryside project funding that we received. Because the rest of it got made up in our volunteer hours and that's where it came from. So if I remember rightly, it was always to do with, you know, responding to our volunteers. So I have a strange feeling like when we thanked the volunteers a while ago and put on, you know, a gathering for the fingers.
See, so it's not, I see.
Special chips or something, far too cuddly. That, that kind of came out there, so it's, it's, it's funding and facilitating that, if my memory serves me correctly. It might not, I could be wrong.
No, no, that'd be enough now, what's reasonable.
But, yeah, we need to bring that, the policy back and, and, and relook at it and, and go, you know, are these reserves still fit for purposes, is this still what the council requires? And then obviously, if we do change it, it requires full council ratification on that. Any further questions, please? Couldn't have those points of clarification ready for, for council because it's got to be.
I'm really sorry.
No.
I've got one more now.
Okay.
Just to be a pain. I was led to believe, do we still have any King Square, is that ours?
No.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's not ours. It is still Norfolk County councils, but we are, we have a responsibility towards certain maintenance.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
License, something like that, isn't it? So we, we've adopted it, we look after it, we have some money towards doing that. But it's not actually physically our asset.
Okay, so Norfolk County give us.
Permission to do.
Yeah. It's really effective, but.
Mostly to spend money.
So, yeah, that's, that's kind of a little residual reserve that's sitting there for, you know, repairs and maintenance that we need to do, that we're responsible for.
It's mostly just stage area, isn't it?
So it's the stage area and then the big square area.
Square area in the middle.
Those are the two zones. Any further questions, queries or comments, please?
No, I'm okay now.
You should. I can tell you what toilets in your reserve formula.
Sorry?
I can tell you what toilets in your reserve formula. Playparks. But no, it's, no, they're all good questions well asked because actually if we don't understand it, how can we recommend it to, to full council? So, yes, if we can have clarification on those particular reserves in readiness for that. Because no doubt, Council Harvick will ask the questions again. It'd be really rude if we didn't have the answers. So the recommendation is to approve the attached movement in reserve schedule. And we will need to recommend that to full council. Do I have a proposer, please? Thank you, Chris. Do I have a second up, please? Thank you, Dennis. All those in favour? Unanimous, thank you. So we move over on to agenda item fifty eight twenty two, which is the update on internal control review and approval of annual governance statement. So we undertook the review, the twenty twenty one, twenty two review, uh, with myself, Barbara, Dennis, referred to as the review team. There you go. Got something neat on the T-shirt. Um, and were ably supported by obviously the town clerk and the finance officer. Um, the template that we utilized at the February tw- uh, we used was that which was approved in the February finance committee meeting and is attached to this document just for reference. So we very much focused on the AGS assertion, the annual governance statement assertion. One and two, in terms of the controls and arrangements that we have in place to manage. And we had quite a good crashing out, I think, really, of, of, and, and, and understanding. I mean, I hope it helped. So both of your understandings were, and obviously will reinforce, um, hopefully the confidence that the council will feel in signing that aspect of the annual governance statement that we'll need to do shortly. Um. The review team recommend on the basis of its work that it is satisfied that full council can approve the annual governance statement that is part of the annual governance and accountability, accountability return. There we go. We get there. Why don't they make these things snappy? So the recommendation is that, that the finance committee note and approve the review. On the basis that this review sets out how the coun- council has undertaken its governance responsibilities, the committee will recommend the approval of the annual governance statement passed the ADR as attached to council. And, um, it is all attached there and that's that delightful, there we go, as on the screen, the tick box process, but we want it to be more than a tick box process. Any questions, queries or comments? And I'm really mindful that I'm looking at Chris now because obviously we can.
I'm all right. I have complete trust in them.
So can I have a proposer for the recommendation, please? Thank you, Barbara. Second up, please.
Oh, you do.
Thank you, Dennis. All those in favour? Thank you. That's a recommendation for that adoption. Now I think it'd be useful for the internal control review to accompany that to reinforce that assurance for council.
On that, we have an independent councillor who does not sit on the finance committee that does some work there, doesn't it? So, Mr. Right, or councillor Wright last time?
Councillor Wright doesn't do any work on that. He, as, as part of our checks and balances and, and, and again, assurance, he reviews the bank reconciliations separately. So to make sure that everything does actually tie up.
Tie in.
Make that information.
But when do we have to select another independent councillor to do this work? That later on the year? I mean, I mean, if he's willing to do that again, that's fine, but.
I, I, I would suggest that he's in place until he says otherwise.
Oh, good.
There's anything in financial regs or standing orders that requires us to redo it annually.
What we, what we should do is express it to the finance tram table that will be taken shortly. So we can then put that as a process there. But it is with council life.
Yeah.
So that he's.
I think we should warn him this time. It was last time we handled this thing, didn't we?
Yeah, but he's done it for years, so you can expect it. That's a bit cheeky, I know, but I'm, I'm incredibly grateful to him for doing that role. Because we're very lucky that he's a non-finance committee member, but he is, you know, financially aware and astute. So I'm very lucky to have.
Somebody that's.
Absolutely. So we move on to agenda item fifty nine twenty two, which is update on the preparation of the annual governance and accountability return, otherwise known as AGR. Um, Alan, I'll have a hand over to you because I've forgotten.
Essentially, what, what, what we do is the AGR has to be in to the appointed auditors by the first of July. We have to publish information on our website by the particular date. And because we're a slightly bigger council, we do this part one, part two, part three. We also have to provide other information, various gates, budgets and all, and all sorts of things. And what we've been doing in the last two years actually has been quite hectic. Last year, I nearly had a heart attack because our full council that was scheduled for the Tuesday actually got postponed to the Thursday. And it caused, it caused a little bit of, of, uh, I didn't have more, I didn't have more hair a year ago than I do currently in the bone. And it was quite, it was quite, quite a, quite a challenge. So what we've asked is, if, if, if this committee could recommend for council, that before we have the planning meeting on the fourteenth of, of June, that we actually have a special council meeting and do the rest of the, uh, the, the, uh, uh, A R statements. So we can do one on this coming Tuesday, you just recommended that to council. Uh, that can be approved and we can sign that off. And the rest of the information, if we can do it the fourteenth, then gives us time to actually, um, uh, publish the information and make sure that we, you know, we actually get it all done. Because there's nothing worse than, you know, rush, uh, or just not getting it done properly, you know, and, and, and having it on time. So we can be early, but we can't be that.
And then that also because the internal auditors are, are also required to sign it. So it also gives us that little bit of extra time.
Mm hmm.
Um, are we dealing with that under committee officers' update?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um. But, but they have, what they have done is, uh, today they actually sent me the finals internal audit report, which I've talked about, another item.
Yep.
But, but I just have to also, they had to have an opportunity to review the AGR. And because we had finance tonight to improve the final, the, the financial information, I cannot go back and prove it and finalize the AGR, send it to them. And they will actually, they've asked if they could attend a meeting where the AGR was discussed and the internal audit report is discussed. So if there's any questions from the councillors, they can, they're actually quite happy to, to arrange them.
Will that be the finance committee meeting or full council?
Um, I'm hoping, just thinking of two full council, the fourteenth, the special full council.
The special full council.
Uh huh.
Okay. So as Amanda said, we've recommend the section one, the annual governance statement, um, to full council next Tuesday. Um, the recommendation is that a special council meeting be called on Tuesday, fourteenth of June at six thirty, just before planning. So the accounting statements can be approved. It's also important that the finalized internal audit report be tabled at this meeting. So it would be effectively two agenda items. Meeting. Obviously, as there are four of us in this room, we can make that, make that recommendation and ultimately agree that, can't we?
Okay.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. That's what we should be for, the fourteenth, so we'll be within the standard orders.
All those in favour? Shall I have a proposal on a second of that really? I'll propose it. Who wants a second up?
Not great.
Thank you, Barbara. And we're really unanimous. See, there, we did that slightly round and round like, apologies.
Got it, fair enough.
Yeah. So moving on to agenda item sixty twenty two, which is the review of the primary managed property agreement, otherwise known as PMPA. Um, so we are required to consider the recommendation by the amenities committee on the operational implications of the changes to the PMPA, to further consider whether to continue with the PMPA and if so, on what basis. And then to decide in principle whether to continue or not. So it looks like the buck basically stops with us. So as you recall, um, at the March full council meeting, it was resolved under minute item, um, eight four three twenty one. Um, following the report that councillor Wright gave, that the item will now go to the amenities committee, discuss the practicalities and then to the finance committee to decide on the future of the contract. Um, so the amenities committee, as you'll see there from the papers, considers the MPA from an operational perspective. Following some of the decisions of the amenities committee under their agenda item eight five seven twenty one. So the following items were discussed, antisocial behaviours, opening and closing time issues, site security which needed increased input, issues which required police involvement, importance of maintaining good relations with English heritage, concerns about it being left open all the time, contractual obligations of ceasing the MP, PMPA, the lack of resources within the council to fulfil English heritage needs and English heritage's intention to continue current operations if, um, the PMPA ceases. The committee were of the view that responsibility to open and close prior should be returned, uh, priory even, should be returned to English heritage. And consequently, those views and comments have been forwarded to us as part of our review of the contract. The matters for ourselves to consider are that an in-principle decision is required by the finance committee to investigate the continuation, continuation of the PMPA. In addition, the matters noted by the amenities committee, the following also needs to be considered. The council has not increased, has not had an increase in the fee it's paid to carry out its obligations since at least twenty nineteen. The council has been paid eighteen pound thirty one per day to do this work. There is no recovery of additional time spent by management in the event of vandalism. The work is currently undertaken by the couns- council's toilet cleaning contractors. In the event of a staffing crisis, the owners falls on council employees. The work is more suited to security trained personnel, which the council's contractors are not. I'll open the fourth discussion, please. Council Harvick.
I've had some major concerns, however, this has just come out for the health and safety of our staff, to be fair. I mean, it was a young lady who was going down to lock up and was getting the business stuff. It's just not good enough. It can't happen. You know, we should look at getting either security people in, properly trained security people in, which English heritage should pay for, rather than us, because we can't, we can't start by things they're not trained for. We, we, we could be in trouble coming, if something, one of our untrained staff went down. Or was assaulted, we could be in a lot of trouble, to be fair, you know.
Yeah, just to reinforce, um, I mean, we're doing a, um, single, sending a single person down at the time. So that they're working, uh, working on their own and everything. And it does open them up to uh, somewhat abuse and everything. So I'd have to back it up. I mean, I'm concerned because the priory is a very important historical thing for the town.
Which is why English heritage are responsible.
Responsible for it, yes. So I, but I, I am in agreement that we cannot keep covering the cost like that and then taking the responsibilities of, of lone worker there all the time.
I mean, I, I personally think that there's two slightly separate issues here. There is the, the lone worker issue.
Mm hmm.
But there is actually the subsidisation that this council is making to a provision of service.
That's it.
But I mean, I mean, the contract really is just openly shut the gates. I mean, there's no facilitate, you know, no provision made for extra hours by council staff or people that have to shut it. And it's that time of the day when anything goes wrong, who do you, who do you phone for assistance? You know, wait for the police to turn up, you can wait forever. And, you know, it's not, it's not fair on that person that has to shut the gates to deal with people that won't vacate the.
Very.
Yeah.
I can tell back to me, I had an example today, I was down at town earlier and stuff, and I met some visitors. And they asked me where the castle lot was. And I said, have you been to Priory? And they said, yes, and they was a bit disturbed to say, there wasn't a warden there, there were some people doing stuff they shouldn't have been. Something going. You know, I mean, obviously it's this building really important to English heritage if they're not maintaining properly. Back in the day, we had a warden who sat in the hut.
Yeah. Hello?
I mean, are we saying that we want to increase the fee to English heritage and then deal with everything? Or are we saying actually we're not in a position to be able to manage that site? And need to say to English heritage, we can't continue with this agreement and contract, yeah, this agreement.
Good. Dr. White stands.
Yeah, I think we should say with reluctance, um, because it is an important site, that we can't fulfil the duties that we feel are needed there and think English heritage will have to do, take it up.
And I agree.
Yeah, I mean, you, 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 you know, if you've got to put a monetary value on it, you can't because there's so many unknowns. It's not just opening the gates. How many hours are you going to be spending? You know, and that takes the team away from other commitments. It's just not something you can put, put a figure on. Um.
And I mean realistically, um, you know, come the summer months, it is a daily task there by our team as well as the contractors. And, you know, when, when we look at the daily fee.
It's classic.
Well, yeah, that's kind of an hour of one person's time with a little bit of encore. Certainly doesn't cover, you know, the antisocial behaviour, the, 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 the other bits that we do. When ultimately, yeah, the MPA is just to open and close it.
Yeah.
Um, so would I be correct in summing up the feeling from the committee that, um, whilst we acknowledge the significance of the wonderful Thetford Priory site and that of the Church of the Holy Sepulcher? Because that is also included within the MPA.
Yeah.
It's one site, it is two sites that we're doing this for. Um, whilst we recognise the importance of them, we are unable to continue with the MPA as it stands.
I'll be right.
To be real.
Do you want to investigate amending the MPA? Or do we feel it is most appropriate, given the conversations that we've just had about staffing and staffing capacity?
Yeah, that's right.
Are we looking at amending or terminating? Dennis?
Um, well, I'm all for trying to give English heritage a, a chance to do a, a, an amendment, but it'd have to be enough to take in the zip guard concerns about our staff and the opening. But, uh, you know, what, how do you do it? Because English heritage haven't had an awful lot to do with the site most of the time, have they?
But we don't have, do we have the skills base within the council to offer that service?
It's maybe the first time we have a non- security. Yeah, no, I, yeah, I agree. We don't have the security based skills levels in the council.
I would say we terminate and then it's the English heritage to come back and say.
Yeah.
You know, make, make a, make a knock out or, or find alternative arrangements, you know. If, if we say we want to negotiate, they obviously want to do it as cheaply as possible. Um, and I don't think, you know, there's just. Um, and I don't think, you know, there's just too many unknowns.
And I mean theoretically, we would end up being a third party broker, wouldn't we? Because we'd have to instruct somebody else because we don't have that capacity. So actually, probably be more beneficial, I would thought, for English Heritage to deal directly with the organisation.
I'll come in line.
So you have a choice and I'm going to put the two to a vote. All those in favour of amending the NPA, please raise your hands. Those in favour of terminating the NPA, that's unanimous.
Yes.
Were you happy with that wording, Karen? I think that, that piece at the start about we, we acknowledge its importance, but then, yeah.
Yeah, we need that.
And we have that authority, don't we? That is a resolved item, isn't it?
We manage projects.
So that is a resolved item, um, and it looks like you've got letters to write.
Funny enough, that's it, the purchase order, they haven't increased the, the amount.
Yeah.
It's the fourth year in the world that they're not just increasing.
And I have to say, I, I didn't realise, it actually says Thetford Priory and Church of the Holy Sepulchre.
Yeah.
We do both, which I didn't realise. I thought it was only Thetford Priory. So, you know, there's, there's.
A gap in between.
A, a distance to cover in between the two. So, you know, we're not even talking an hour of somebody's time that we're looking for that and we do too much more. So resolved item. Thank you all very, very much for your help on that. So we move on to agenda item sixty, sixty two twenty two, committee officers' update. Over to you, Alan.
In terms of, um.
Can't we do a correspondent?
No.
Oh, no, I miss correspondence. That's my fault. Apologies. Sixty one twenty two, correspondence, to note and consider any correspondence. Is there? That was nice. Sixty two twenty two, committee office update.
Uh, this morning I received the finalized internal audit report, uh, so it's too late to speculate to, to, to the committee. Uh, so we will be saying that the, uh, meeting, the special council meeting on the fourteenth.
Can we?
Would you like?
I'd love a verbal feedback though to this committee before then, because actually I really want to celebrate this. If it hasn't changed from draft.
Good question. So we just had one item that they created, the video regarding our policies and the publication of our policies and procedures, the things like standing orders etcetera, which we're now putting the updated copies on the website and that's the only item that they've really pulled this up on.
I, I, I have to say, I think a substantial assurance, um, assessment is fantastic. And, and it just demonstrates all the hard work that Alan has put in since coming in. All those committee officer reforms that we have been sitting through for the last two, three years.
That's true.
Yeah, are paying off, you know.
Absolutely.
That, that process of self-assessment, self-improvement, self-evaluation that we've been going through has been reinforced and I really do think that the policy, the updates on the website. We've kind of known that there was that issue. So we are in a place now to, to move forward with that. And obviously there is work going on as well with, um, potentially new websites as well. So, yeah, going forward, it looks really, really positive. We just need to get policies up to date and make sure, and then we're there.
Yeah, we, I'd give my congratulations to Alan because when I was doing finance, I was there. I was going to go and jay there.
Financial team.
We have moved forward considering.
That's the team notice.
Yeah, it's there.
Yeah, I think, thank you very much for the committee because you also provide support and they're very bad circus on one of the important things.
We have a good chair.
I, I think your chair helped too, I mean, to be better than, I mean, the financial acumen that you've got coming in. It's usually the bonus.
I'm very much housewife economics. If you haven't got it coming in, you can't spend it, but yeah.
The best wife is in.
I'm just a husband, I just spend it.
I think the other thing is, yeah, I mean, my past as a bookkeeper has always been that, um, sort of interpretation between business owner and accountant and advisor. So I think that just, just putting it into layman's terms and the, you know, the, the narrative that we receive readily with the accounts, it next to it and highlights it, it's just so important. It's something I remember really strongly from our school governor days.
Yes.
That clerks used to do for us and it, it is invaluable. And, and it's really good to the point of reference back as well. So, yeah. So we'll move on to, thank you, Alan, for that up there. Uh, we move on to sixty three twenty two, which is community engagement. To discuss and agree, any consultation or media release required. Um, I don't know if there's anything you can think of. Obviously, we will have the formal notice to the public to, um, inspect the account should they wish to, and that will be obviously by appointment as per, um, the forms. And we will have those out on time again. Um, but is there anything else that we really need to be shouting about to the public? No.
No, good. Not me.
In that case, I declare this meeting closed. Thank you all ever so much for your work.
All right, can I make a comment, please?
Yeah.
For the first time, uh, you can turn it off.